Okay, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners for the month of February twenty twenty-two. And the first item of business and as part of calling to order is that we are allowing remote attendance for commissioners and others pursuant to Illinois Public Act one oh one dash zero six four zero. And we are doing so because of the current COVID pandemic hotspot, if you will, that Urbana and Champaign have been recently, although I gather things are starting slightly to trend down. But we're doing remote attendance for a matter of matter of public safety. So first full item on on the agenda is in fact to either accept or modify the agenda. And as far as I know, there are no suggested alterations to the agenda. Do we? We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Seeing none, let's go ahead and hold a roll call vote since we are in remote attendance. I I no longer see either. I don't see Cedric nor Meredith here at the moment.
Meredith was having Meredith was having a sound problem, so she went out and is going to try to come back in.
Okay.
Communicating with Cedric to get him the link.
Okay, well, then roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Aye.
That Nancy and I voted in the affirmative. So we did. We still have three people here and participating on that. And and so we have accepted the agenda for the evening as it was presented to us. And next item of business is public comment. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to address the board at this time?
None reporting here, Michael.
Okay, and and you are at the field office facility?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so the 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 public venue, which was open to anyone who wanted to come there, has no one in attendance wishing to address the board, and I see no indication anywhere on my screen of saying so. I think then we can move on to staff introductions.
Great. I think we have a number of introductions tonight with the various staff. I'll let each one introduce their staff.
Yeah, Elsie, you're you're first with Nancy.
Sure. Hi, so it is my pleasure to introduce our outreach and wellness intern for the spring semester, Nancy Chalal Sandoval. So Nancy, you can unmute and tell them a little bit about yourself and give a little wave.
Hello, everyone. As Elsie mentioned, my name is Nancy, and I'm a senior majoring in community health. And I'm excited to work with hopefully all of you throughout my internship.
Thank you. Uh, Elsie, is Owen here? Owen's not here. Okay, um, we'll move on to Kyle with Devin.
Yes, I think Devon's here. Devon is our athletics intern for the spring semester. Devon, if you could just introduce yourself real quick and tell me maybe what you've been working on.
Yes, so hey, everybody, I'm Devon. I'm a senior studying sports management at the University of Illinois. And honestly, I've been working on like just everything, just managing rosters, doing jersey rentals and and answering phone calls and setting up different programs in the gym. So pretty much I've been just all over the place.
Great. Thank you, Devon. Welcome aboard. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Leslie here shortly, but I I did want to brag a little bit. Jennifer Nierhausen is has been with us here at the Park District for eleven years-ish. And she came in as an aquatic specialist. And due to her hard work and dedication, we have promoted her to the aquatics coordinator position. So I wanted to give a big shout out for her for all her hard work. And then Leslie, I I will let you announce our our new aquatic specialist.
Okay, um, I want to say congratulations to Jennifer as well. I without her, I I want aquatics wouldn't be where it is today. So her expertise has definitely, you know, helped aquatics through all of all of our growth. The other aquatics professional that I would like to introduce is Alex Lynch. He is the aquatic specialist, another success story because he started as a part-time lifeguard for us, moved up to a shift manager, and now, well, he left for a little bit, came back, couldn't couldn't leave us forever. So he came back shift manager again, and then just got a promotion up to aquatic specialist. So he'll be in charge of our programs and will be helping us out day to day, you know, running the facilities and that type of stuff. So that's Alex.
Alex, you got anything to say for us?
Hey, what's going on, guys? Um, I do want to give a shout out to the other new employees that we uh that we met Devon and Nancy. Uh, can't wait to work with you guys and for everybody else I can't wait that I haven't met. Can't wait to meet you guys face to face and work with you guys. Um, I also want to add that, uh, you know, we talked about Jennifer, but I feel like that kind of went by too fast. You know, um, Jennifer in aquatics is a pretty much has been in my life all of aquatics. Um, and has influenced pretty much a lot of the things that I've done. Even going off into the Marine Corps, which is why I took my break. I went out to the Marine Corps for six years, decided to come back. And you know, Jennifer was there with me like, hey, you want to come back? Let's go. She made sure that I was good and trained and ready to go. And it's been a beautiful experience, the whole ride. I love everything that I do. Um, you know, right now I am continuing to work on swim lessons, private swim lessons, group swim lessons. Um, you know, also peek in the future every now and again, I look at what's coming up. Uh, as far as like the movie days for the outdoor, Father's Day for the outdoor, parent nights for the outdoor, just kind of thinking of uh, new things to implement, getting a lot of ideas from a lot of different people within the park district on how to improve a lot of things. And yeah, I'm I'm having a great time. I think it's a huge blessing. I appreciate it.
Welcome aboard.
I got I got to meet Alex this summer at the pool. He was just, you know, there are some people that that you meet, you don't forget. And you you see them the first time, and then every time you see them and you think, oh, this is a really good, this is a really interesting person. So I I'm really happy to have to have you back with us full time. This will be great, Alex. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, indeed, and and welcome to all the interns and and all the the new staff and those changing jobs as staff. It's just terrific. It's a it's great to see. And and I hope you interns are noticing that that we do promote people from inside. So, you know, you mind your pizzicues here and learn what you can. And there may be some some things to do later on with the park. We always appreciate people who who start out and and contribute in the in the even at the intern level, and often they turn out to be really valuable employees on down the road as well. So welcome all. Okay, next item is the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee report. Is we we did have a set of minutes in our packet. Is is there a a direct report from from Uptech tonight?
It probably doesn't need to be. It was the same grilling that we got from Monica. What's her name?
So Kim.
Yeah, right. So um I I think it was it was more eye opening for Uptech than it was obviously for the for the board. They really got a good sense of how determined these women are to get to the to get the answers that that we are anxious to to have as well. So it was it was a great meeting.
Okay, any any comments or questions about the Uptech? Seeing no indication of that, then we are ready to move on to our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda for the evening, our approval of the minutes of the January eleven twenty twenty-two regular board meeting. Uh, the receipt of the monthly departmental reports, namely administration, planning and operations, and recreation. Action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude. And approval of the monthly paid accounts payable. And again, under our rules, the consent agenda, it is the purview of any single commissioner to remove any or all of these items from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and consideration. Is there any commissioner wanting to take anything off of the consent agenda this evening? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, I see no sign of anybody wanting to do that. So do we have a motion?
I move to approve all of the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded, and also under the consent agenda rules, at this point, there is to be no discussion. The matter is on the floor, and we should hold a roll call vote, which we will do and our reverse seniority, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I voted affirmative as well, and I carry unanimously. So moving on then to our reports, first up is financial reports.
That's me. Hello, everybody. So I will be walking you all through the activity for the Urbana Park District for the month of January twenty twenty-two. And I can share my screen here and actually pull the reports up on the screen. That might be helpful. So hold on. Just give me one second to get that set up. Here we are. Okay, can you all see the fund balance report?
Yep.
Okay, so the first report that I'll be discussing tonight is called the revenue and expenditure report. This report shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior twelve-month period, the budget for the current period, and the unaudited results through January thirty-first twenty twenty-two. So we're nine months through the fiscal year, which is seventy-five percent. The first page of this report is what we call nicknamed someone, and it is all of our funds except for the capital improvements fund. So it's basically the core operations of the park district without clouding it up with capital improvements, which are a lot of high up and down swings. So the revenues for this period of time were eleven million eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, which is an increase of a hundred and three thousand dollars since December. Seven point six million of our revenues are property taxes. And in January, we received our final property tax interest distribution, which is the final payment that closes out the entire levy year. So there will not be any more dispersments for the levy for this year, and so we'll be looking forward to our next property tax levy year, which will usually the first payment comes at the end of May. Uh, the due date for the first property tax payment is June first. So anybody that pays their property taxes in May, we usually get a small disbursement, and then our first big ones in June. The second half, the bottom half of this report shows our line item expenditures for the entire district except for capital. And so we have expenditures at this point in the year of eleven million and thirty-six thousand dollars, which is an increase of three hundred and six thousand since December. And we have a surplus at at the end of nine months, which means there is an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Some two, which is only the capital improvements fund, just is only that fund alone, and it shows revenues of two million ninety thousand dollars and expenditures of one million one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. And we also have a surplus in the capital improvements fund of eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, which is unusual. Um, we usually basically have a deficit in this fund because the whole point of it is to spend it out. So we receive money once a year, and then we we try to spend all of this money as meant to be spent. But part of it's because we did a million dollar transfer in last month, which is going to go towards the health and wellness facility. And so we just are a little bit ahead at this point in time. But with construction manager on board and the design, the final design work moving forward with health and wellness, I think we'll continue to be spending this out. And, you know, most of this is going to get spent in next fiscal year and partial in the year beyond that, but we'll we'll budget for all of it again next year. Anything that's remaining in this fund will be in line with it. And then the last page is both of those first two pages added up together. We call it some three. And this is all funds district-wide, and we have an ending fund balance for the district of eighteen million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So after that are the summary reports for the general fund, the recreation fund, the museum fund, and the indoor pool. I don't usually go over those in detail unless you have specific questions that they have been provided to you in your packet. And I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the pages of the revenue and expenditure report before we move on. All right. Well, not hearing any coming questions come in about, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen again, and this time I'll be sharing the treasures report. So this report is the amount of cash that the district has on one day, which is January thirty-first twenty twenty-two. Currently, still only twenty-four funds are represented in this list. However, in January, the board made actions to add the Brown Fund to the list of funds. Well, actually, it was earlier than that that they added the fund, but we didn't open an account to accept the funds into the fund until January. So at the January meeting, they acted to open an account at UC Wealth Management, and we opened the account, but the funds didn't get moved in there until January twenty-eighth. And we didn't have access to the account to see how much the money it was until Monday. So it was after I already had to have these reports out. So the total that I'm about to read to you of how much cash the district has does not include the Brown Fund yet, but it will next month on your reports. And I have, I went on to the account, got logged in yesterday, and I have the report right here. So I'm going to get it booked in RGL this week, and it'll all be in there for next time, but it's going to be fund number fifty-five in the list, and they're all in numerical order there. So you'll see it show up next month. I set up the fund number and everything. I just didn't get in time to have it included in the report. So the total cash on hand at the end of January, except for the Brown Fund, is sixteen million eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred and sixteen and forty-one cents. And the Brown Fund cash that we received was six hundred and ninety-one thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. Um, and then I'm going to be working with UC Wealth Management to make sure they get that invested. Um, part of the information they provided to us was a listing of various investments that they would be recommending to keep that those funds invested for us and have some interest income that can help pay for public art and for our public art program. So I'm going to be working with them on that over the next couple of weeks as well, and I hopefully can have more of an update for you on that next month. Uh, okay, so page two, the top of this page lists all of the accounts that we have, all of the funds that we have in interest-bearing accounts. So of that sixteen million eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, we have fifteen million two hundred and eighty-seven in interest-bearing accounts. And the next section lists interfund loans. We don't utilize interfund loans a whole lot, so we don't have, there's no changes to interfund loans this period. There's a couple of reasons that we might need interfund loans, like, for example, if we move forward with improvements at the outdoor pool or something, and it's beyond what's available in the R and R fund, that that might be a reason that we might do an interfund loan to wait for the rec fund to be able to reimburse it when they transfer more funds in next year, for example. So it's just we don't, we don't really use them that often. So that's why there's not very often changes, so. And then the last section, page three, lists all the dispersments that the park district made during the month of January. And this is a really average January, so four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in dispersments during this month. And that's all I had to present on that report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I move we accept the treasures report for audit.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Uh, hearing none again, in remote attendance, we should hold a roll call vote, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, I carry unanimously.
Okay, um, the final report that I'd like to review with you is our capital improvements budgets, just to highlight any activity that has taken place during this last month. So any areas that had activity are highlighted with a asterisk symbol. So in our series twenty nineteen A bonds, we had a little bit of activity in the design work for the Crystal Lake Road system. That was the only thing that happened in that one. So I hope you don't get dizzy from me scrolling because there really wasn't a whole lot of activity in capital this month. Um, sorry, I gotta get my script up because I already, okay. There was no activity at all in the twenty twenty-two budget. This is our new one that we just started. Um, normally, the very first thing we pay is all of this cost of issuance, and we haven't even finished paying for that yet. So this is still just at the very early stages of getting started, but, you know, Andy knows he has the go-ahead to start spending this money if we're ready. So you'll you'll start seeing that pick up as as we go. And as we get more information about these other pieces of equipment that we're planning on bidding this year, we'll fill in the probable committed amounts there for what this could the vehicles are. So this is just an early formation of this budget that we're seeing here. The twenty twenty-one capital budget had a couple lines of activity. One was in the construction crew projects right here and in some design work for the outdoor learning room. For that's coming from the museum capital grant that we received to do that construction. The twenty twenty capital budget had some additional spending out of the construction crew line that spent this line out all the way to zero. So once we moved, we moved Keith through, we give him a budget to spend on his construction crew projects, and then as he spends out one year, he moves up to the next. So that's why he finished spending this one and then moved on to twenty twenty-one. Guy showed the previous page. So that's why we have that one. And then down in the contingency section, we had some additional spending. I think it was for like playground surfacing or something for Blair, for the Blair Park project. And then we also finished spending out the saline rock griffles, which is in the next budget that we're going to review, but there was a tiny, tiny bit, twenty-five dollars that spilled over over the budget that was allotted to us by ID and R for that project. So that's the amount that we spent on that beautiful improvement, which is really wonderful. Uh, all of the rest was funded by ID and R. And so you'll see that down in this twenty nineteen budget that we finished sending out this money to zero as well. The two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that we received for that project. So we paid twenty-five. So that's really cool. I just thought that was neat. Um, and that was the only expenditure in the twenty nineteen budget, and there was no activity at all in the twenty eighteen or seventeen budget. So it was a little bit of a slow period, you know, in the middle of January, well, before we picked up with the major construction period in the spring. So with that, I will mute and allow Andy or Derek or is Andy here? There's so many people here. I'll let them touch base on any things that have happened in the capital realm since we last met.
Yes, I'm I'm here. I can start with some of those items that you had touched base on that we had some expenses with in capital, starting with the Crystal Lake Park Road project. We are currently out to bid. Um, held our pre-bid meeting by Zoom last Wednesday. Our bid opening is scheduled for next Monday, the fourteenth at ten AM. Uh, so that's going to give us, you know, two or three weeks to review all the submittals and the alternates and evaluate what our budget would be able to complete based on where our priorities for those improvements would be. And we ended up concluding seven alternates in total. And that was to allow us to be a little more flexible based on our available resources. And so some of those alternates include like the three separated parking areas. Um, so the the base project will be the ring road through the park. And then any bump out, the small parking lots that are kind of right adjacent to the road are included in that base. And then we had alternates for those three kind of larger separated parking areas. Um, one by the large pavilion, the other one's below nine oh one, and then the one below the uh, pool maintenance mechanical building. And then we had some alternates for additional parking to the Lower East Lake House Lot. Um, additional parking near the new playground area where the path kind of crosses the street there to the new small pavilion. And that's really just like another bump out of the road. Uh, and then we had an alternate for a turnaround and new retaining wall uh, with a garbage enclosure to the Lower West Lake House parking lot that'll kind of make um, operations there much easier for staff at the lake house as well as rental groups that need to come in and do a drop-off um, or any sort of catering or anything like that. We anticipate a recommendation then at the March meeting and then finalize those contract documents and pre-construction items um, in the following month after. And then within, you know, I think I've updated before within those specifications. We identified this summer up to July twenty-ninth as our construction window. And then we included in those specifications that one parking lot to the lake house would remain um, available during that duration of construction for the operation there at the lake house. Then a couple of quick things on Crystal Lake Park Rehab Project. Um, I just wanted to note that Kara and I had a couple of presentations in the last few months on our recent improvements um, that included the park's history and the preliminary planning leading up to all the construction that was completed in that planning prior to two thousand and twenty that led to what ended up being our rehab project. Um, the first one was with the local stormwater conference um, and which Aaron Pandy from ERA joined us as well and helped build the presentation. Um, last month, Kara and I then did the same presentation to a local chapter of um, the Illinois Society of Professional Engineers. Um, I think the both presentations were very well received. We had some good questions. People were really interested uh, in the history of our parks, as well as all those improvements that we had completed together in the last couple of years. And then I wanted to note that with that, I've been working with Aaron um, in the last month or two to compile information from our project. ERA is actually nominating the Crystal Lake Rehab Project for Project of the Year in the environmental category in the Illinois chapter of American Public Works Association. And so my understanding is if that gets selected, which I haven't heard anything at this point, it would actually uh, then proceed to a national level for nomination for that award, which is kind of exciting. Um, like I said, I haven't heard anything at this point, but I'm going to check with in with her in the next couple of weeks. I think they were supposed to have some sort of decision, maybe in March, and I'll let you know if we get any good news. And then come another item within Crystal Lake Park. Um, we had updated the board a couple of times on the upcoming sanitary districts work with their bridge replacement. And Tim Derrick and I met with ERA and the sanitary district as they're finalizing their bid for that replacement. And they're hopeful to have that out in the next month or so and are targeting much of the work to follow our road project, uh, which would be this fall, potentially into winter. Um, but we do, I mean, there are a few questions and uncertainties as far as a specific timeline, um, primarily based on lead times associated with the bridge fabrication and delivery. Um, so that likely will be adjusted as we get more information from them and. So that likely will be adjusted as we get more information from them and uh, we'll just continue to give you uh, updates as we get them on that. And then um, real quickly on uh, museum grant project. We're continuing to uh, review that design for the Up Deck Pavilion and the parking uh, lot near the nature center. Uh, held another meeting last week with Ratio. We're working to finalize fixtures within the pavilion and the parking lot for the lighting uh, specific fixtures themselves. At that meeting, uh, we were able to um, refine our bid schedule. I think we had some questions on what our lead time would be for that pavilion itself. Um, and so what we are hearing that it's, it's taking around 12 to 14, 16 weeks at the, at the longest for that lead time. So we're anticipating to still have this bid out um, in March for an April uh, board recommendation. And then that would still allow um, enough time, worst case scenario from what we're hearing from the, the pavilion manufacturer on that lead time. To be able to have a delivery sometime in August uh, when we would intend to uh, break ground at the site. Once the pool season starts to wind down and camp season's over. So that's all I had for tonight unless there's any uh, questions on any of those items or anything else.
Yeah, on the uh, Crystal Lake Park Road Project. It might be worthwhile just to review with the board uh, kind of some of the bacteria aspects of it. I know we got a cost estimate recently that we were encouraged by, but uh, being a rather large bid, I just want to prepare the board for, for the recommendations to be forward in, in uh, in March.
Yeah, I didn't hear the first part, what you said.
The budget, what, what kind of budget are we looking at for the Park, Park Road Project? This is the.
I think the last estimate was uh, 1.7 million, I believe.
But this is.
No, we, we have funding that I think that we have set aside at this point that would be able to cover that. But of course, you know, we won't know for sure until bids come in what the prices are actually going to be.
We had two attendees at the, at the pre-bid uh, both IDOT certified uh, capable of doing these, these large projects. That is a requirement for this bid. And uh, this will be um, I think the first time uh, maybe ever that the entire Park Road has been milled and resurfaced. I know early in Tim's career, we did a, a portion of the Park Road. And uh, you all may recall that early on before we did the, the one-way road and trail study, we wanted to assess the condition of the road. And so is that a complete uh, evaluation of, of that? This will allow us to uh, do some full base patching replacement in areas where the road's in really bad shape or we see a lot of alligator and there's, there's uh, drainage issues. Uh, more hopeful than most, most of the road will simply be a known overlay though. And uh, we'll be able to return or retain uh, the historic stone curb along sections of the road. So it's a, it's a project that we've been looking forward to for a long time. It's, it's, it's going to be one of the final things that we, we work on to help ramp up uh, the park. And as Andy mentioned, you know, the, the team that's working with the, the Up Deck Lending, because I was also looking at our park lighting. And that, that's, that's another, I'm still out there, all, all as part of our, our master plan update. But I did want to please prepare the board for, for a rather big recommendation coming forward uh, next month.
Thanks, Eric.
And any, any other questions or comments? And I think that completes the financial reports and we can move on to the executive director's report, yeah?
Thank you, Michael. A few updates, starting out with you belong here items. We continue to work with the university on the call to action. It looks like the summer season will be our kind of kickoff. And I think the hope is to blend area-wide activities with new um, opportunities that will be supported by the university. Think they have about two and a half million dollars available for this first year. That sounds like a lot. Obviously it'll be spread out across campus and across the county. So we hope to be active. I'll be working probably with the more executive committee. And Corky will be working with the implementation team. And uh, we're already sharing some of our summer events, things that we have in the works. That might be supported or picked up as a part of that. So we'll be learning a little more over the next few uh, meetings that we have. Hopefully we'll kick that off and continue to work on that. I think the vision for that is five years. So there would be a, you know, extended window on um, those, those sort of activities. Uh, but we're eager to get started. The other thing, thing I wanted to report on is we had a really terrific um, peace walk on Martin Luther King Day. We had over a hundred people that participated in the event that started at Cresvey Park. Walked uh, over to Larson Park, had some words and um, speakers there and then returned to the park. Very meaningful. It was just really a good day. Um, included voter registration. And we had, in addition to the Urbana Park District, we had the Urbana Rotary, City of Urbana, HVNT, Urbana Free Library and the Housing Authority of Champaign County with their youth build. So we're real excited about that event. And I think there's interest in continuing that. Seems to be a good time of the year. A lot of young people are out of school and uh, not a lot else going on. And good, good way to get outdoors and um, enjoy the parks in a meaningful way. Moving on to other reports. Um, as you know, we've been working hard with all the park staff on uh, replacing staff at the administrative office. So I'm happy to uh, please, please to uh, announce that Sandra Ott has been promoted to accounting assistant two. She's doing a terrific job and her leadership is much needed. We have several new employees that have been hired and are uh, in various stages of starting or beginning of their training. Kathy Niles will be our new accounting assistant one, and she brings a lot of experience. We're just really grateful to have somebody with a lot of skills. Paula Mondesa is our new office manager. She also comes with many years of experience. Looking forward to working with her. And lastly, Laura Orcut um, is our new finance manager and will begin training um, a few times a week. While Katie is able to oversee her work, likely to go beyond that, but we're excited to have those positions set. And I want to thank all the leadership team and administrative HR um, staff for helping with the various panels of interviews that um, helped bring these great candidates to us. Also wanted to mention a few other folks uh, work at the cottage in case we're not aware. Kathy Myers has returned in a part-time capacity. As you remember, Kathy retired from the Phillips Rec Center, so we're glad to have her on a part-time basis. Rain Craig continues to work in a part-time uh, basis as well, helping as well as Dylan Nell's Hopper. So we're happy that they're here. And I'm, lastly, would like to recognize Allison Jones, who's uh, completed 10 years with the Urbana Park District. We're really thrilled about that. Thank you, Allison. Her uh, services recorder and other duties is just terrific. Thank you, Allison. We really enjoy working with you. Lastly, just want to mention district-wide, we still have a few open positions. There are four open positions ready uh, or trying to be filled. And then we have a three additional positions that are open, but we're looking at the timing of when and if uh, to actually follow through with those. So um, still looking for good people. If you know of anybody interested in working, let us know. Moving on, wanted to keep in our forethoughts, um, staff in the Aquatics Matrix Team continues to work on plans for the next year at the Indoor Aquatic Center. As you know, that we've been working with the Urbana School District in talking about ways that we can reduce the operating cost. They've indicated it's really just not a sustainable um, uh, cost that they continue with. So I think the general plan is work toward a one-year agreement to get a setup. We'll probably be seeing drafts of that in the near future. Likely some changes may come. One of the things that's being discussed that could be a somewhat cost savings is to close the indoor aquatic center for the summer. We've talked about that over the years of benefits of doing that or, or keeping open. Some of the other mitigating factors are um, challenges with staffing both pools. So this will give us a little bit of relief, at least um, in not keeping two pool staffs at two pools going. Other things are being looked at. Uh, obviously, um, there's some savings with closing for the summer. But I think what we're, I think our staff team is really trying to work toward of trying to identify what kind of ultimate budget could be provided between both districts and then try to establish a program based on what's available. You know, we can continue to talk. I think a little more on the abstract. Um, we, we probably rack better if we have a number and a target and then see what we can provide. So we'll continue that discussion after we get this next year um, contract in place. So we'll continue to work on that until we can bring it forward. Wanted to also report, Kelsey Beck, you and I met with Nick McDuffie. He's the new executive director at the Savoy Rec Department. Savoy is interested in, they've learned uh, Derek and Corky and I met with Nick uh, a couple of months ago after he came. Just told him about the UPD and one of the things they're interested in is looking into an advisory committee. So Kelsey and I met with them and kind of gave them the background and history, how it operates, function, the benefits. So they're thinking about that um, as they're a growing community. Having input on parks is really important and they know they have a lot of interest in Savoy and their parks and their programs. So we'll stay tuned and see if we can be of help that way. Health and wellness, uh, just a quick update. The Park District staff's been invited to make a presentation to the Urbana City Council on Monday, February 28th. The city is open to us requesting funds from the ARPA Fund, that's the American Rescue Plan Act. For funds that would go toward the new health and wellness facility. So we have a meeting, I think uh, Thursday with Carol Mitten, city administrator, would like to learn a little more about the goals and some of the needs of the city and, and how they view that. We've had discussions already with the mayor. I think she's very supportive of the project. So we'd really like to learn a little more of how best to present our needs and um, hopefully we'll get that chance and be successful. I think our current request is for two and a half million dollars. Um, and that, we know that would go a long way to help complete the building, add any other sustainable elements and potentially add some of the outdoor features if we're so fortunate. Obviously, we're concerned about pricing and um, supply chain issues and, you know, prices going up. So certainly additional funds to go to the project would be very helpful. Another item of note, um, the IAPD Legislative Conference, not the breakfast, Mike will probably touch on that in his report. But the Legislative Conference is March 8th and 9th in Springfield. Unfortunately, our staff won't be able to attend on March 8th because that's the same evening as our March regular board meeting. So because of the compressed legislative schedule, we won't be able to participate. But uh, several of staff plan to go over on March 9th for the Legislative Conference for the educational sessions. And then where Kelsey is working on trying to set up meetings with Senator Bennett and Representative Ammons here in Urbana. We thought that might be more convenient for their schedule with the compressed schedule. We could probably catch up with them here. Obviously, if they prefer Springfield on the 9th, we can make that happen too. So we'll work with their schedules with the number of things we'd like to talk with them about. So we're looking forward to that visit. Also wanted to mention the Boneyard Arts Festival um, is coming up, April 1st through the 3rd. And um, as we have since 2014, the UPD will be hosting the uh, sculpture exhibit at the Meadowbrook Interpretive Center on Saturday, April 2nd. So we have um, selected an artist, Charles Yost will be representing his artwork that day at the, out at the barn. And uh, Charles has been an exhibitor at the Wondell Sculpture Garden. So we're looking forward to seeing a little more of his work and having him back in Urbana. Continuing on, um, staff continues to work on promoting and getting feedback on the Crystal Lake Park Master Plan. We have a number of meetings set up uh, to share that plan. We're having our second meeting uh, with the School for Designing a Society. The Franklin State Residence is coming up. Derek and I are also meeting with Carl Hospital Staff in Planning and Development to share the plans and uh, promote some of the things that are happening around their campus. And lastly, we just had a meeting this week with uh, the executive, new executive, new to me, executive director, the Champaign County Fairgrounds. Sharing ideas and opportunities uh, along the edge of the park and the fairgrounds. So been getting good feedback. We look forward to continuing to work on, on finalizing efforts there and then continue to implement that plan. Think I mentioned last month, perhaps in my uh, board report, if not. Staff uh, is working with the Landscape Architecture Graduate Studio on the proposed Saline Greenway. We're very excited to have this student-level study. It's a small studio of five um, architecture and landscape architecture students. So we're able to kind of focus. We've had our first tour. We have another tour tomorrow of the rest of the site. It's very large area. I think the general plan is to have a student approach. And then there's maybe a potential to do some refinement work over the summer. And then I think in my board report, I suggested that maybe a future state planning and research grant might be an ideal opportunity to get a little more professional quality work and uh, maybe lined up for an engineering analysis after that. So we'll stay tuned to that. Wanted to mention that the Jetty Roads Day Planning Committee is having our kickoff meeting next week. So we're excited about that event returning and uh, seeing everybody again to get that going. Another spring event that's coming up is Arbor Day, which is April 29th. Chelsea Proll called the first meeting together of staff and city of Urbana staff. And we're very excited about our efforts uh, that'll be focused at Blair Park, trying to attract middle school and high school aged uh, youth. And the most exciting thing to me is the theme for this year is going to be on careers in the green industry. So it might be a way to encourage and attract, connect um, young folks um, to the green industry, which could be everything from environmental sciences to Arbor, landscape and design uh, and related topics. So we'll be able to report back on how that goes. Think the uh, Champaign County Housing Authority's youth build will also probably be out there as well as maybe other volunteers. I think that's all the quick updates I have. I can answer any questions.
I had one, I hope, quick question, Tim. Where do we stand with the redoing our, I don't know, preferred, preferred providers, the, the, the update of that? What, what, what is the schedule on that actually going live?
I'm going to ask staff that might know a little closer on dates or any implementation. Is, are there any updates to share for Michael?
Yeah, Derek and I are meeting with um, Fred tomorrow, or tomorrow or Thursday. And um, we'll have our timeline out to begin to um, solicit those um, applications. Would probably want to have those um, by the middle of March. Where we can do our, our review and evaluation and grading and then get them into our program in April. So there'll be a public notice. Um, I think we're going to try to have a Zoom meeting as well to get uh, new uh, contractors um, an opportunity to hear more about the program and ask any questions um, during that time.
Thanks, Andy.
We just completed reviewing a list that Fred provided of uh, all the contractors that have been certified through either the City of Urbana or the, the, the state of Illinois list in our area uh, for different trades. So we have sort of our invite list ready to go.
Uh, thanks for the update. I appreciate that. I, I somehow had in my head that, that the process was going to start a little sooner than that. But uh, okay, uh, it will be that next month, basically uh, to get, get things really rolling. Okay.
But you'll keep us in the communication loop on that? Yes.
Any other questions for Tim? Uh, seeing no indication of that and uh, move on to the president's report. In terms of upcoming meetings, it was a very first thing is uh, the legislative breakfast, which will be this coming Monday, Valentine's Day. We, we love our legislatures. I guess it's, it's what that's supposed to be about. And this is going to be a rather, a rather different format. There will not be uh, individual presentations by the various districts involved. It's a, it's a much broader set of, of districts involved. It's a, it's a much broader region that's being uh, in, involved at this point. But uh, to encourage people to tune in and uh, and see what, what gets said there if you have time to do so. And that, that's uh, starting at 10 o'clock on this coming Monday.
What are the concerns that we want to make sure that are brought up? Or are we not, is that not going to be part of what we're doing is bringing? Or are we not, is that not going to be part of what we're doing is bringing out direct concerns? I mean, general concerns, obviously not.
Nancy, our understanding is it's more of a presentation format. So we'll have information from the Joint Legislative Committee, the IAPD platform, and then comments from any each of the elected officials, representatives and senators. That was similar to what we did last year. And unfortunately, because, you know, we'll have more of a presentation format, each district will not be able to make a presentation. Typically, we'd have, like in our case, our Board President, Michael, would provide some update with a focus message from the Urbana Park District. We won't be able to do that this year. One other reason, obviously, we have many districts joining us, Springfield, Decatur, Normal, Bloomington. So it's, it's going to be a larger presentation. We hope we can return to our smaller formats next year.
Right. But what are we, what are we trying to put in front of the legislature legislators in general? What's our, you have a sense of?
I know things that they're really encouraging is, you know, encouragement of people applying to the OSLAD program. There's going to be essentially double the funds, around 50 plus million. For us, I think, issues that I know we would be talking with legislators about is really the impacts with minimum wage and inflation, which relate really to our overall tax rate, tax caps, our buckets, as we call. You know, even if we were able to receive more tax dollars or the limiting tax rates. So that's always a concern to me. And I think, in my opinion, we're probably nearing the time we may need to start talking about those things. Additional ARPA Recovery Funds, I continue to remind folks, Park Districts, Forest Preserve Districts, Special Rec Districts, Conservation Districts were all excluded from any ARPA funding. So we have to rely on the generation or sorry generosity of any other district that might have received funds. That's why we're approaching the City of Urbana. Perhaps there may be future dollars that could come through the state that could come back. So I think that's something I know I'd like to talk with Scott and Carol about. And then additionally, we have some DCO funding for the KRT. I know our both counties, Champagne and Vermillion, we just need to know. We need, we need that money and we need to continue development. So those are a couple of things I would recommend we talk about. But if there are messages that commissioners would like us to add, feel free to let me know and we'll just add that to our talking list.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I I hope you'll have at least a little bit of a chance to say just how important some of these programs have been to us, particularly recently. So but if you add up an hour and 15 minutes with excuse me, with the number of legislative districts that are involved, it's, it's going to be a little harder to have in-depth conversation for sure.
Right.
Those discussion points would be good, though, for when we do meet with our legislators in Urbana.
Right.
Yep.
So let us, let us know if you do have talking points. We'll, we'll just add them to the discussion. And again, Michael, I think the format's pretty tight. There will be no presentations from any of the districts. It's essentially a kind of a welcome, the Joint Legislative and then IAPD. And then each of the present elected officials, meaning the state representatives and the senators, will be able to make a brief statement.
And probably very brief.
We've seen some of the RSVP lists, not all of them, as you would imagine, can attend. But I would, I bet we'll have at least half of the ones invited, maybe more. So that will take a long time. I'm sure there's script being scripted and told how much time they have. And if you remember last year, which we had less people, it was still well over about an hour and a half to get through all of that. So hopefully everyone's compressing their message.
These are politicians.
Okay, moving on, future meetings, the February UpDak Meeting is on the 22nd. And then 1st of March is our next board study session. The primary topic there is expected to be the Meadowbrook Park Playground Design Concepts, which I think will be of interest to everyone. And and our regular board meeting will be on the 8th of March. There are bid approvals that will likely to be received there. And we will also be receiving the next fiscal year wage salary and merit recommendations. Not for action on that evening, but at least we will get our first few of those as a board. And that's, that's all that I had for this evening. We move on to liaison reports. The Finance Study Group has not met since we last talked to the, it held a regular board session. We, we, we met prior to the January board meeting. We're meeting again tomorrow morning. So I hope to discuss a few items then tomorrow in advance of our meetings in March. Is there anything from the Policy Study Group to bring up?
No, we last met in November and will meet again as needed.
And the Urbana Parks Foundation, Roger?
Yeah, we have not met since our last board meeting. We'll meet next Monday.
And and the UpDak Planning Study Group, is there anything to report there?
Nope.
Okay. All righty then. Moving on to old business, there was no old business removed from the consent agenda. So there's nothing to deal with under old business. And moving on to new business, item A is Action to Award Blair Tennis Rehabilitation Design Services.
Andy has some updates on that proposal.
Yeah, I'll kind of start by just walking through some items from the memo and start with some background. Blair is, you know, as I think we're all aware, serves as our most heavily utilized tennis facility with the district. It's also utilized by the school district for PE programs and for their IHSA girls, boys tennis activities. Our last court rehab project took place in 2018 at King Park. And at that time, we worked with a contractor to come do informal evaluation of the conditions just to help with our capital budget planning. At that time, he thought Blair was in decent shape, but we should be planning to complete at least a crack repair and color coat in the next three to five years. And then at that time, we placed the court rehabilitation in our capital five-year plan and identified funds through the 2021 and 2022 budget years to complete work at Blair. Recently, the foundation also identified Blair Courts as a priority project and have raised around $94,000 to go towards improvements to the northern set of four courts. And then last month, we reached out to MSA for a proposal to complete the design bidding and construction services. And that proposal is attached to the memo you have tonight. MSA, you may recall, is a group we began working with more recently and specifically are currently working with them on the Park District's overall hardscapes evaluation report that they're currently putting together for us. So that specifically to Blair, our improvements will include, you know, a minimum rehab and color to all the courts, the north four and the south three, including the addition of pickleball lines to the southern three courts. That would obviously then allow either tennis or pickleball activities. And those pickleball lines would then utilize the existing net, which is similar to how pickleball has been incorporated elsewhere in Champagne. And Kyle, I think, can probably attest, we've heard some demand for outdoor pickleball options in Urbana for a few years now. So it'll be pretty exciting to actually get that option out at Blair. So as part of our bid, we're evaluating options for potentially a mill and resurface of at least the north courts or alternatively to do an overlay system that would get us a warranty up to 20 years with minimal crack repair needed during that term. And that overlay application was recently completed at a park in Champagne. And we believe may be a good fit here at Blair as well. But I think we had updated the board before. It still comes with a pretty hefty price tag. And then as part of the court work, the chain link fencing and then some of the post embracing around both sets of courts will also be completed as part of that surfacing. And then, you know, ultimately, we'll, we'll put out a bid with some alternative options to help us identify what best series of rehab scenarios we could use based on the amount of budget we have available. So our hope is to try to fit the resurfacing project between IHSA tennis seasons, which would have work at the site between early June and August. But we may need to be flexible based on the availability of local court contractors. And there's not many of them that would come to our area. And so just depending on on how their schedules are filling out for the summer, we may need to adjust accordingly. So, you know, as part of that proposal, you'll see and within the memo, as far as budget wise, MSA's professional services are identified for a cost of $26,400. And we're recommending to include 15% contingency on that, an amount of $3,960. And I will note, we, the color of the courts will change as well. I think currently they're the black and orange, but we're going to go to more of the traditional blue-green look.
Good thing those aren't any champagne colors.
Okay, are there any questions?
I had a question. So the $94,000 that's been raised by the Parks Foundation, is that in relationship to? I remember there was a presentation about David Foster Wallace and some sort of some sort of memorial or something to him at at that tennis court. Is that, is that still related to that project?
Yes, we have a foundation effort to raise funds additionally for the court repairs. In addition, they're reaching out to the David Foster Wallace, Wallace Foster, Foster Wallace Foundation and making an actual request. I think that's, they're going to making, be making that decision a little later, I believe in mid-June. So the timing, we may, you know, be a little bit ahead of that. But the short of it is, any funds raised, we'll be sure to put them to good use.
Awesome. Thank you.
So Tim, is the 94, is any of the 94 going to be used for that memorial? Or is it all going to be used for the, for for the resurfacing? That would go for the resurfacing. Okay. I think we were looking for any sort of special maybe gift or any cooperative or, you know, match or something like that. Obviously, once we hear back, we may know more what they're intending. But going to make the full request and still, you know, the goal is 160,000. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Yes.
I think just terminology wise, it's going to be more recognition, not a naming of any courts, just so, just so everybody's aware.
Short of some extraordinary gift, you know, that would come forth. And I think just a reminder, I believe anybody that made a pledge or gift of $1,000 or more would be recognized at the site. So we do have that in mind.
Am I, am I thinking right that this is not exactly a foundation? The foundation is sort of managing this as opposed to spearheading this?
Um, the foundation is is spearheading it. I mean, it's, it's an action of the foundation. I think the Schumpf family in Urbana was very passionate. So when Nancy brought it forward to the foundation, I think they agreed that they could take on this other small fundraising. Their family pledged to do most of the, you know, outreach and connection. So I think it's probably a pass-through opportunity. But it is a foundation, you know, activity. They'll book the money and certainly would be on their, you know, ledgers.
Right, right. But it's not, it's not, they aren't putting much, I mean, this isn't, this doesn't sound very good. I was gonna say, pretty much effort into it. The effort is coming more from the, from the sort of Schumpf coalition, if you could, if you want to look at it that way. And it's, it's not, the, the foundation is, is almost essentially just working with them to to have a place for them to work, is that? I mean, because I see station doing, I don't want people to think that the foundation is taking on too much, too much fundraising. I think still the foundation is more directed at at the health and wellness as opposed to putting a considerable amount of effort into this. Okay.
Yes, I think the idea was, you know, we should be focusing mostly on health and wellness. But we do have this opportunity and I think we know Blair Park has touched a lot of people's lives. So I think their interest in their family network was willing to kind of do the footwork and, you know, reach out and do the asking. It's been very successful.
Yeah, it's a nice collaboration, I think.
It is. So I think the outcome is, you know, at least on this project, there was a way to do a small fundraising effort as well as a major, major.
Yep.
I, I think it's best to say, Nancy, that this was not initiated by the foundation. The foundation is willing to be to serve as the umbrella group.
Greatly.
So that there is, so there is a, a way for the money to formally be handled once it's received.
Yeah, that's a great way to describe it. Thanks. That's good.
It's also, you know, I guess notable that this, this was on the list of priority projects that the Park District provided to the foundation a year ago, so a year and a half ago, well, a little bit over a year ago. So I think, you know, one of the foundation numbers at that presentation probably saw this and thought, well, that, that, that fits my interests and abilities. I have connections with former tennis coaches and tennis players. And so he, he really took the charge. And there's a nice dropdown menu on the Parks Foundation website about this project and why, you know, how they're going about fundraising. So so it's not, it's really truly being carried forward by one foundation number, but well, she's done a great job.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone prepared to make a motion on this recommendation?
To award design services for the Blair Park Tennis Court Rehabilitation Project for $26,400 with 15% design contingency in the amount of $3,960 to MSA of Champagne, Illinois.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we should do a roll call vote in remote attendance, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy? And I vote affirmatively as well, so that passes unanimously. And that brings us to Action to Award Annual Bid for Program Guide Printing Services.
Mark Schultz is here, along with rec staff that can report on the tabulation.
Yeah, I was gonna start out by giving a little precursor. We typically have bid out our leisure guy. We typically have bid out our leisure guide, program guide with 50 pound paper. Obviously, we've had some concerns with the paper quality here and definitely the last guide. And there've been other examples in, in the guides before that, just not as bad as the last guide, which actually kind of spearheaded where we're headed now. So we got quotes for both 50 pound paper and 60 pound paper. We received samples for the 50 pound paper, which from the low bid was KK Stevens. And when I seen that paper, I was like, wow, that's just like a newspaper. I mean, it was worse than anything that we've seen so far, which kind of got me concerned in general. Looking back on our last guide and maybe even the one before that, is that the quality of paper, even though we are specking 50 pound paper at this whiteness and such and such, I was very concerned. So I called the company to find out, you know, this doesn't seem like the same quality. And he was very upfront with me and said, you know, what you, what you get for 50 pound paper today is not the same as 50 pound paper two years ago. And with that in mind, I mean, I had a really good conversation with the gentleman. From there, Tim and I had a discussion, got a nice brochure actually of the 60 pound paper, looks like definitely a huge step up from what we've been receiving over time. Of course, it has a little bit bigger dollar amount to it. But we as staff and Mark can go through the recommendation, but I, I feel that the 60 pound paper is going to give us the quality that we want to put and, and the image that we want to put on the park district. So Mark, if you want to go through the bid and then we can, we can ask, answer any questions after that.
Definitely. We put out a request for bid in the News Gazette in December. And we also then sent bid invitations to 24 printing companies. Of those 24, 12 were minority or women owned. We received four sealed bids to print the copies and we opened the bids on January 18th. Pursuant to Corky's comments, the low bid for the 60 pound paper was American Litho of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. So staff recommends that the board accept the 60 pound paper bid from American Litho to print the program guide with offset paper and an additional glossy cover in full color with 60 pound paper three times fiscal year '22, '23 at a cost not to exceed $42,124. Will print two editions of 80 pages, one edition of 72 pages. And this will represent an increase of roughly $7,000 over last year's printing contract.
So the other thing that stood out to me was if you see what Mark's put in the board packet, we had two companies on the 50 pound that were fairly close to each other. And the last two were ways away from each other. So what the, the gentleman I talked to is, he basically said, like, we're all learning in today's economy is it's a seller's world, not the buyer's world at the moment. And so I'm very, I was very concerned based on the quality that I seen in, in the 50 pound paper and the big differences in the price of what their bids were. And so again, I, I know we'll be very happy with the 60 pound paper. It is a huge difference. I wish, I mean, if we were in person, I could show you the difference. Probably wouldn't, I, I've got them here, but you probably wouldn't be able to tell that well on the computer. But I think this is a step that we need to go to provide the quality and the image that we want at the Urbana Park District.
Are they, are we suggesting that part of the printing problem was related to the paper? Or those from the last?
Okay, after I was speaking with Mark and Lexi, our graphic designer, she, Lexi for one was saying the 50 pound paper is a huge issue.
Okay.
And it was more prevalent in this last guy, but we've had that in the other guides too, where it's bleeding. The, the prints bleeding and, and smearing. So my, my feeling is that especially when I seen the samples that were sent in, that the paper quality for 50 pound is just getting worse and worse.
And my sister's, my sister is a graphic designer and also, also expresses this issue with paper. So I, you're, I've heard this from her as well, working for clients, like even lead times on things like that are taking longer. And, and things are more expensive, so.
And it wasn't American Litho that we had trouble with before?
No, we, we've used American Litho a couple of years ago. The company that we used this last year was Indiana Printing, which we've, I, I will say we've used Indiana Printing and had no issues as well. Indiana Printing and American Litho kind of, they go back and forth on which one ends up with our, our bid. But, you know, I will also say for Indiana Printing, they've probably had issues with workforce, just like everybody else. And maybe American Litho will have the same issue. So I don't, I don't, I don't want to blame it on that. I mean, we've been very happy with Indiana Printing before. And this year, we're, we're not as happy. But I will also say that it seems to be a, a paper quality issue as well.
Yeah, okay, just checking.
I did want to add, not to belabor the, the motion, maybe more for Cedric's benefit newer to the board. You know, we've discussed many, many, many times alternatives, going all digital. You know, should we spend the money on this type of product, one that hopefully gets recycled? When I came to the district, it was literally probably less than newspaper quality. So we've come a long way. I just want to report, you know, if you go to the state conference and you go to the showcase of districts that has all the print material and all their brochure, it's still the place, it's still, you know, everybody's still doing it. I think we've all come around to accepting that it's really part of our marketing. It's our identity, it's our front face, and that it is worth investing. And until everybody is done with paper and no one is competing in that, you know, market, so to speak, it's still a good product to consider.
Well, I think especially since we're working to get our message as widely as we can into the community, the, the notion of going all online is just not acceptable at the moment. So I, I think that, I mean, not that I would have voted against it otherwise, but I think that that's just, I think that's just the sort of a common sense we have looking at it.
Yeah, and I'd like to have a quality product going out to, to Urbana. So I would be happy to suggest the motion if we're ready to award the bid for printing for the 2022, '23 seasonal program guides to American Lithgo for two 80-page print runs and one 72-page print run with a total price not to exceed $42,124.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Did have one clarification. Does, does this include also the, the postage of, of sending these out or, or addressing them? Okay, so this is just generating the, the printing of it, okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we should do again a roll call vote, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I voted in the affirmative as well, so that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. And that takes us to item C, Recreation Statistics Review.
Okay. Tim, do you want me to just go?
Yeah, please go on. I was just gonna say Corky, I think, will set us up.
Yeah, so again, we're, we weren't quite in COVID like we were the year before. So we're starting to pull out a little bit and we've got the core team here that's gonna do a, a presentation for you on, with a slideshow. But before we get into that, I usually make a few comments on the first four pages, which is kind of the synopsis of all the information you have. So going right on in, you know, we had, first of all, this year, it looks like, again, we had some troubles putting all this together with the snow days that happened last week. But we got everything tabulated and put together from all of our seasonally vows. Charles at Phillips does that process for all of our departments. But the first column is actually the current year on, on this graph this year. Obviously, you know, we, it looks like we gained around 94,000, almost 400 participants as far as visits over 2019, which was before COVID. So we're starting to gain ground as far as people being able to participate us. We didn't really start our special events until late or beginning of August with the art fair. So again, that definitely brings our numbers down. But we had a total of 241,216 visits, which based on what we've been dealing with, I'm pretty happy with that. It's almost 100,000 more visits than the year, the previous year during COVID. Our rentals actually did really well, I, I would say. We had 1,265 total rentals. Nineteen, in 2019, we had 1,900. We brought in $102,000 compared to $146,000 in, in 2019. So again, based on what we were up against, I feel pretty good about that. Numbers are starting to come back. So I'm like that. Going to the programs offered and canceled. You guys are probably used to me, used to hearing me say I like to have like a nine to 10% cancellation. To me, that shows that staffer being, you know, trying new things and continuing to mix things up a little bit. We're a little higher in that, but I, I think a lot of that is, we're right around 14.8%. That's more to COVID than it is to anything else. You know, whether people are willing to come out or, or not. Swim lessons, I think, would be a good one for that. We are having a lot of swim lessons still, but numbers in those swim lessons are, are down pretty good at the moment. And I think that's, I mean, I'm thinking from my child's perspective, I'm probably more comfortable not sending my child to a, a swim lesson at this point. So all in all, we, we offered 742 programs, 110 were canceled. Comparatively, we had 1,007 and programs offered and 74 canceled in 19. So again, not bad. Now volunteers, when we move to there, we actually did really well. We actually ended up with 2,490 hours of volunteer time compared to, make sure I'm in the right column, 2,094 hours of volunteer time in 19. So all in all, I think we are on the road to recovery, so to speak, as far as getting people out in our programs. And even with the latest Omicron variant, I, I feel we've still had good participation. Everybody's getting, is comfortable with the safety practices that we're following. And yeah, so that's what I wanted to mention on that. I was gonna let the staff get into the nitty gritty on all the good things that have happened over the course of the year. So is there any questions before I turn it over to Mark to start the presentation? Okay, Mark?
Okay. This is our, going to be our 2021 year in review. And we will begin with the marketing department. Of course, we produce our three seasonal program guides. And this year was featured greatly in providing marketing assistance for our health and wellness building project. We assisted in many marketing events or marketing materials, including an open house type of meeting out at, out at Prairie Park, the proposed site for the health and wellness in the fall. We continue our major advertising campaigns. This includes print, electronic and digital ads on, on the various media you see on your slide here. An interesting highlight this year is Stevie J Broadcasting. He was able to get Greg Solier as his meteorologist to give his forecast. Greg Solier has been on local radio and has been very popular in the past 20 years. And we sponsor his, Greg Solier's forecasts on Stevie J Broadcasting in his morning show. It's mentioned, the forecast brought to you by Urbana Park District. You belong here. And then they mentioned a couple of things happening at the park district. We also get extensive play commercials throughout the broadcast day on Stevie J's stations. We have a continued strong partnership with Smile Politely and Shambana Moms. We send monthly, monthly digital ads to their online, to their online publications. And we're coming up on the one year anniversary of a agreement with New Hof Media, Decatur and Danville. Hot 105.5 is a very popular station for the young people. And it's played at the pool many a time during the summer at our pool. So we are on New Hof Media. You can see our major media campaigns this year included the Open Road Celebration at Crystal Lake Park. Definitely have done many job openings and hiring ads. We always highlight our swim passes and our lap swim hours. We also did COVID regulation communications. Turkey Trot, of course, Folken Roots Fridays and the Power of Parks 5K. That was a COVID-inspired event that really caught on well. And we're very pleased as how that turned out. And we're always very happy to, to get the word out for that. So that's marketing is, are there any questions?
I've been hearing support on WEFT. Writing announcements, yes, right, I missed seeing that in the list, yep.
Very good.
Yep.
Nothing else, are ready to move on to the next one? The envi- our environmental programs.
All right, hello, I'm Savannah Donovan. I'm the Environmental Program Manager. And I just wanted to give you a summary of some of our highlights from this past year. For the first time in, we're not sure how long, probably many, many- For the first time in, we're not sure how long, probably many, many years, every single organic garden plot was rented at both of our parks. Meadowbrook Park, of course, is the community gardens. Victory Park is reserved just for those folks in the neighborhood area there. The number of garden plots can fluctuate from year to year depending on the demand for full plots versus half plots. So it's hard to kind of compare year to year. But our statistics for twenty twenty-one were that we had one hundred and nine plots at Meadowbrook rented to ninety gardeners. Some plots were actually rented twice because some people sometimes forfeit their plot early in the season, and then that plot can be rented again. So that was very exciting news. Environmental education programs, our coordinator Chelsea Proll worked with a few different collaborators, including Ag in the Classroom and the Champagne County Forest Preserve District to compile some education kits. We they delivered fourteen hundred and ninety-two kits to second graders at twenty-five schools across Champagne County. These were curriculum-aligned kits, so you know, school teachers were able to accept these kits and integrate them into their curriculum. It was just a really nice thing that we could do since we weren't able to go into the schools and schools have not been taking standard field trips like they typically do. However, we still were able to reach seven hundred and thirty students in person in Urbana and Champagne through twenty-three programs. Actually, some of those were virtual programs, but some were also in person. Moving on to some public programs, our big event for twenty twenty-one was Take a Child Outside Week. That was in September, and we had two hundred and five participants throughout the course of the week. Our three most popular programs were the Free Outdoor Movie Night. That's always our our big kickoff event. We collaborated with the Fab Lab to do a fort building program where they helped provide some fort building kits at the Nature Place Game. And we did a Pride Nature Hike. So we actually had the last day of Take a Child Outside Week was the same day as the last day of Pride Weekend here in Urbana. Overall visitation, we started out the year only doing private guided visits, so we were not open to the public. Actually, we weren't open to the public in the summertime during the weekdays either. So our visitation is still, you know, very much skewed from a normal year. However, we had almost nine thousand people visit the nature center, and then of those two hundred and eighty-one people were doing during seventy-six private visits. And then for a full year, more than a full year, we've had the people counter going outside Bucie Woods. So this has been able to give us a much more accurate picture of visitation by day of the week, by month, by season. So overall, throughout the course of twenty twenty-one, we saw over forty-eight thousand walkers in Bucie Woods. Additionally, we did reach over four thousand people during virtual public programs. We had a few different virtual public programs, but the most popular, the one that kind of spread the farthest, was the series called Connecting You to Nature, where our coordinator goes out into district natural areas and would do a Facebook Live broadcast. So while you broadcast live, that video is then still available to watch on Facebook. So some of these numbers in Arc are kind of high because they've been watched and rewatched by folks, but we still consider that program engagement because they still have the opportunity to engage live or to ask questions in the comment section. And then finally, twenty twenty-one was really the first year we were able to do a full year of the nature store as run by the Anita Purvis Nature Center. You might remember that it was formerly run by the Champagne County Audubon Society. We purchased the store when they were no longer able to run it, and we opened in February of twenty nineteen, I think, was was right when we opened the store. So this is finally getting into a more accurate, you know, year as far as being able to sell things regularly. So we had almost six thousand dollars in sales, and of that fourteen hundred and fifty dollars in profit. And one thing that's not on the slide, but there's a photo here of our nature day campers, as that picture on the bottom there. And you know, I can't say that we had a great year as far as revenue because we were operating at fewer than fifty percent of our normal number of campers that we would have at nature camp. But we did not have any COVID outbreaks. We did not have to shut down because of COVID. All of our campers and staff were healthy and safe all summer long, so I think that's really something to be proud of. Yeah, any questions from anyone?
What do you see as your challenges for the next year?
Well, it's always challenging to plan for the next program guide because we're continuing to have to predict what place our customers are going to be in and our world and our, you know, the state of of public health and safety. So we kind of, you know, we're always having to forecast, but it's a little bit more difficult still at this time, you know, trying to debate what proportion of programs should be planned to be virtual. Obviously, we're we do environmental programs, so the we can do a lot of things outside and and you know, always that's a great option and a preference for us, but it's just difficult to know what people want and what, you know, what's gonna really you know, draw people in. So we're always open for 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 suggestions and and feedback and to work with community partners, I think, is a real advantage because then we know that what we're doing is going to be impactful.
Have you been able to see the, you know, an improvement with the changes that you've made in the gardening programs?
I believe so. I think part of the success of the garden program is also coincides with some of COVID as well. I think, you know, people wanted to be outside more. It's more reliable in some circumstances to grow your own food. So it was kind of a, it seemed like just a nexus of of things going well for that program. Of course, we have put a lot into that program in the recent years. So we did garden focus groups. Chelsea has worked very hard to, you know, make sure that we're improving the soil quality by offering regular compost. Our costs for that program are going up substantially because we're offering regular compost to the site to both locations, actually, and that's to build up the soil profile. I mean, after so many years of being such a successful community garden space, not and because the plots are rented, you know, a different person rents it every year. It means that people haven't always put back into the soil what's been taken out of it, right? So we've been working over the last few years to rebuild that soil, and it really does seem to be having some some impact. We have not had very many complaints. Our surveys from this past garden season were fairly positive. Additionally, we had a mugwort issue that we were battling, and that seems to be under control as well.
Hooray. We got the equipment boxes coming this year, right?
Yeah, that's right. How soon? Oh, so those will be ready for the spring?
Yeah, they should be installed in the spring, I believe.
Great.
So yeah, if you're not familiar, Nancy's talking about free tools to loan out to folks at the gardens. So we're we continue to collect donations of garden tools, and then they'll be stored in those toolboxes at each of our garden sites.
That was also a recommendation I took out of the focus groups and was in partnership with the Urbana Arts Group.
Yeah, it's a really lovely combination.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Savannah. Next is aquatics.
Hello, I'm Leslie Erdhage, Aquatics Manager. So with aquatics, like Corky was saying, it's been a little difficult with COVID and everything and people being comfortable because obviously you cannot wear a mask in the water. So those have been issues this past year and trying to figure out what's the best way to deal with everything that's brought to us. The accomplishments brought and distributed is supposed to also say life jackets. So we bought seventy life jackets last year, and we have been able to do some water safety meetings slash trainings type of thing for kids and then hand out free life vests for them. So they'll have their own to be able to use in whatever body of water that they're at. We do still have some more, and I I'm planning on keeping this program going. I really like it. I think that it is very beneficial for the people that we we teach water safety to. The second thing is swim rentals are extremely popular right now. Trying to find a spot for a pool party, private or during public hours, has been crazy. I don't know the difference between swim lessons not being, you know, popular and these swim rentals being extremely popular, but it's the case right now. So we're going with it. And then mermaid party this year was in October, and we had twenty-five people sign up and come. As you can see, there's a picture of our mermaids there, and they just kind of swam around. We had some activities upstairs. The kids seemed to absolutely love it. The parents really liked it as well. So that'll be something that we continue. I'm wanting to do one in at the outdoor as well, just so we can have not only teeny tiny beach party. That has been a huge success since we started that at the outdoor, but then just have a playing mermaid party as well. Some big areas of future concentration, overall operations of the department, just making sure that we're running as efficiently as we can, making sure that everything is, you know, up to code, that we are as safe as possible. Everything that, you know, goes into aquatics. Consistently training staff to ensure the highest quality of employees is always on the top of our list. To be able to have that operation in aquatics, we definitely have to have the highest level of training and safety at our facilities. So that is something that we continue to strive towards. And then the last one, this has gotten a lot harder since COVID, employee recruitment and retention. We have had ads out for months, and I think maybe we've had three lifeguards apply. That's not even people who said, you know, apply and then just don't respond. We have literally had like three applications come through. We are currently going through everybody that did work for us last year and asking them if they're planning on returning, just so we have an idea of where we're at for the summertime and just going on from there. So did anybody have any questions?
I would like to add in aquatics. You know, we typically have, and and the board, you've heard me say this, we typically have around a hundred and thirty-five employees in aquatics, and we were able to maintain our hours at the outdoor and partial hours at the indoor during the summer with a total of around seventy staff. So while it may not be on the screen here, that's that's a huge achievement to be able to accomplish. Our cross-town park district was had to close lots of times, and we were able to stay open.
Yep.
Who who is doing our our safety? Is that what we call it? You know, the safety inspection when you used to be starfish? Were using them or?
We're in our garden still.
Okay. Just curious.
Yep, and they come and do audits. We have three audits during the summer where they come unannounced, know that they're coming. So we actually get a good idea of how our staff is doing, and then they come once during the fall and once during the spring. Again, with COVID, it kind of got a little wishy-washy, and they tried to come and we were closed, or they didn't know the indoor was closed. So they've they've been really flexible and awesome with us to make sure that we get the services that we need from them as well.
Okay. Thanks, Leslie.
Thank you.
Kyle.
All right, I pretty much have mostly numbers here. I kind of touched on all of our programs, so I'm just gonna kind of buzz through most of these. Savannah discussed with camp. It was, I mean, it's a struggle just not getting near the numbers that we normally have. But we did service over ninety-six kids in our five sessions of sports camp this year, which was probably definitely lower than nature camp and art camp. But with no field trip, with no field trips, we were still able to find ways to have fun, still staying around the Brookins area. We have archery that meets three times a year now. We used to do two sessions in the summer. We're now doing two in the summer and one in the fall. It continues to just max out every time. We would like to offer more sessions of it or extend the amount of people that can participate in each session, but just the the time that the archery group has to offer us is only so much, and they are doing it as volunteers. So that program is pretty much all revenue for us. Kickball, I only mentioned it. We've pretty much had our lowest numbers in a long time, so that's not really a highlight. Summer and fall, we've had five teams both times, but after not having it for a year and a half, getting those teams back and those teams still being encouraged and wanting to get more teams in to play against is still encouraging and great. We have our Pony Baseball League that runs in the summer. We play with seven other towns in the surrounding area. St. Joe won our tournament this year. That's played at Ambucks Park. For outdoor fall soccer this year is actually one of our biggest turnouts in a long time. A hundred and ninety-five kids playing from first through eighth grade and fifty-one more in the Sharkies program with soccer and basketball and pretty much all of our programs this year with COVID in the last couple of years. That's like the number one question that everybody's asking before we even play a game is, are the kids gonna mask? And it seems like Urbana's really been doing a really good job of doing it. We don't have arguments. We don't have anybody questioning it, and we really avoided a, we've had some players occasionally get COVID on our team, but it's not necessarily related to the practice, and we've always been able to avoid it becoming a big team issue or anything like that. We actually had our best fall in a while in volleyball, actually, one of our best seasons in quite a while with seven teams in the fall. We only got four this winter, so we lost a few already, but it seems like with COVID, even some of these programs, we're drawing more people just because we were finally open and they wanted to get out and do something. Preseason shooters basketball program, we had twenty-three kids getting started on their basketball skills before our current basketball program that we have a hundred and thirteen kids participating in third through eighth grade and forty-three more in the first and second grade program. It's our first and second grade is pretty much about where we max out most years. The third through eighth grade is a little bit less than where we normally are, but again, we got into the schools last second this year, and this year the school district put a little, they have a lot of issues going on as well, so we weren't able to get as many locations for our practice sites. So we're pretty strapped on where we could put kids and how many kids we could allow in and when we could start advertising to get those kids in. So it kind of pushed us to the limits, but we are, we are in week three of our program now. A lot of teams practicing at Brookins and at King School, the middle school in Thomas Pegg currently. Got indoor soccer this fall. We had ninety-nine kids in the program, which is a very, very high number for indoor soccer that for first through eighth grade that only meets once a day. Or once a week, I mean, we have the cat family and a few other volunteers running that program for us. We also have a few new programs going on, the Youth Reshape Program. Not sure how many people are familiar with that, but we got we collaborated with Phone Home Boxing Academy and a company called U Shape U, and they're both just on building character of kids and it's kind of like skill-based athletic stuff, but it's also has some of that other factors bringing in, trying to get kids. uh, other factors bringing in, trying to get kids on the right path kind of thing. Um, and why bring up that program? There's another exciting program that we're getting ready to start. Uh, I'm sure Corky might have more information about it, but midnight basketball is coming back to Urbana. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that. But it's a middle school and high school basketball program that's been running for over ten years in Champaign-Urbana area, almost solely in Champaign. Uh, we've met with Reverend Comer the what this week and we're getting ready to start here in Urbana next Friday. Um, things that is gonna be an awesome program. We got high school and uh, middle school kids and they get trophies every night, awards every night. Um, a lot of uh, meeting, they meet up and discuss a little bit of life before and after games and just play and have a good time. So it's a another exciting opportunity we got coming uh, up here pretty soon. Um, the other thing, gym and field rentals, we're doing really good. Um, on gym rentals, considering being off so long. Um, the summer wasn't real busy, but we are so busy right now that unless you want a rental on Monday night from ten to midnight or Saturday night from ten to midnight, you're not renting our gym after four o'clock. So we're doing really good on rentals right now and programs. Field rentals were pretty decent for the fall after being off for a year as well.
I think that's pretty much all of our programs. I'd like to compliment you guys on on um, working, I mean, on having well, let's see, how do I put this? We have really good volunteers in the cat and the cap family and you guys, uh, and and Ben is a is an up deck member, so it's a he's kind of a twofer in a lot of ways, but you know, there are, there are places and there are times and there are people who wouldn't necessarily be willing to work with folks like that. And I think you guys have done just a spectacular job of of working with them and and, you know, not feeling like they're getting in your area and and just you know, taking the help that they're that they're willing to give. And I think it's made a huge difference in our soccer program in general, and I think that they are really committed to getting minority populations into soccer in Urbana in one way or another. So they they're uh, big contributors to the you belong here as well. So I salute you guys for working with them because that does not, is not always the case.
I consider them our soccer gurus and tell them that all the time. I feel at times we put a little bit too much on the expectations for the indoor program and coaching, but they do have a lot of kids in our program and they love doing it, so.
Yeah, and they're good.
We love having them.
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent. Thanks, Kyle.
Yep.
Janet?
All right. Uh, my name's Janet Sosby. I think there's maybe someone here who doesn't know me. Um, I'm the committee program manager and I'm presenting for uh, my two staffers, Matthew Lewis and Jacob Johnston. Um, they're both relatively new. Jacob started his new job in January of twenty twenty-one. And Matt started in April of twenty twenty-one, so um, it's been a very interesting year and I'm really proud of them for what they have pulled off. Um, we were really excited like everyone else to start programming again. And uh, we got to be the first uh, official park district event after uh, uh, COVID break. And so that was the Crystal Lake Park Art Fair, which um, we held next to the nature center. And we had um, we're thinking about fifteen hundred people come out to the art fair. And then close behind that, we had a very successful jazz walk. If you were there, um, it was a gorgeous night. I think, you know, we were able to do live music. Obviously, the parks have been extremely popular and it was a gorgeous night, so I think it was just very serendipitous. It was a perfect night. People were so excited to be able to be out and about and in Meadowbrook. Um, we had the jazz music and it was perfect. I had a little more trouble uh, getting musicians, so we had fewer stations than usual. Um, but all in all, I was really so, so happy to have live music back at the park district. It made us all really happy. Um, also, uh, highlight for this year was our age-friendly programming area. We offered thirteen programs and we canceled none of them and probably um, a lot of the uh, visitation we had was due to parking lot bingo. We had three different types over the year. We had it at the large pavilion. We had it at the Phillips Center in the parking lot. And then we partnered with Health Alliance and Clark Lindsay and had some big sessions out at Health Alliance and at Stone Creek Church. Those were very popular. We bought a um, a transmitter that we can broadcast to the car radios. So people can sit in their cars, Jacob can call bingo, and then I'm the one running back and forth from the tent to the cars with prizes. So he's, he's in his twenties, I'm in my fifties, and I'm the one hustling bringing the prizes to the people in their cars. But it's really exciting because they honk their horn when they get bingo. And it's just a lot of fun, very safe, very low impact. People could just pull right in. They never had to get out of their car. And it was just a huge hit and we were so happy to do it. Um, we also, you know, the return of ukulele programs, rules of the road. We had some age-friendly kitchen demos that uh, happened, so we were really excited with all of those programs and um, then this fall, the senior potlucks came back to the Phillips Recreation Center. And our numbers have been down a little bit, but in general, um, the senior club members were so excited just to be able to be be with each other again and have lunch and uh, you know, overall, all do, doing a pretty good job on wearing their masks when they're not eating or drinking. So they're just so excited to be back at the Phillips Center and be active again. And then like um, the other coworkers mentioned, camp reduced capacities. Um, but you know, and staffing issues, getting everything covered so that everyone is safe and we have enough staff. And um, we had two hundred and fifteen campers total across the summer. Um, preschool arts camp, all sessions were completely filled and then arts camp was pretty nearly completely filled. So uh, we had a really good summer. It was, you know, both of uh, Matt's first summer. So we're really excited this year to come back and plan an awesome camp season. Oh wait, the lake house. We got to open the lake house again after being closed for the the rehab and our new boat dock. So um, we were open forty-one days and we had two thousand four hundred eighteen boating visitors. So we were so excited to have boats back on the lake and that's a very tiny picture, but I'm sure you saw it in person. We love our new boat dock.
And you really miss the geese, right?
Oh, boy, do I ever. We we had a, we had a great, we had a great summer at the lake house, you know, it was um, it was fantastic.
I was just gonna make one more comment on the, with the splash program.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, you guys probably all remember uh, about five years back where one of the grants had run out. Uh, one of the Twenty First Century Grants. And they ended up reapplying for a grant and they got eighty percent versus a hundred percent. That was at the middle school. And so at that point, the park district um, looked at ways that we could uh, offer more programming. Um, like from an intermural standpoint, Kyle did some more sports-type programs of splash. Um, it cost us some money in tax dollars. Um, so just thinking of challenges, there's another grant that's um, unwanted or coming to an end. And so we've started meeting with Linda Gibbons who runs the pro is in charge of the finances of the program. And so again, a little challenge there, but we will continue to find a way to make sure that the splash programs are an offering that continues to take place. But yeah, is a challenge, so I want you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next up is Elsie.
Hi all, I'm Elsie Hedgesmith. I'm the outreach and wellness manager for the park district. Uh, thank you all for sticking it out till the end with me. Um, so twenty twenty-one was a big, exciting year, uh, mainly because a lot of things came back and we also got to really launch a few things in full capacity. Uh, two of those being our coast and Urbana. So if you remember, um, our coast is community outreach and support team. And that is comprised of thirteen individuals who either represent neighborhoods or organizations that we formed really good working relationships with um, for outreach initiatives. And I paired them together for this with Urbana because I really feel that although we launched Urbana in twenty twenty, we didn't really get to really do anything in full capacity for what it was really intended. And during twenty twenty-one, I don't think we would have been su- as successful with what we did get to do with Urbana without the help of our coast members. And just to put that into perspective, um, I worked with Ashley, who is our outreach and wellness coordinator and who supervises Urbana to really tally up just how many Urbana events did we do this year? Uh, so we did fifty-five different Urbana events this year. Uh, we had nine in January to April, thirty-four in May to August, and another twelve in September through December. And uh, I mean, those ranged from everything of providing recreational activities during food distributions or doing vaccine clinics or just doing a variety of onsite programming um, with a lot of our different partners. So I did want to make mention of some of those partners right now. Um, out of those fifty-five events, we partnered with Silver Hearts Organization, which uh, does work in the Silverwood neighborhood. Learman Neighborhood Action Committee, the Jetty Roads Day Committee, USD one sixteen, CU one-to-one mentoring, Urbana Free Library, Dream House, uniting pride, City of Urbana, Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, Housing Authority, New American Welcome Center, and Forty North. And out of that partnership list, one, two, three, six, seven of them are coast members. So I really feel that those collaborations were integral into the success of what Urbana was able to do this year. Uh, we also got to do special events. So I know Janet showed her enthusiasm for just how wonderful that was, but I can't tell you after taking a year off of Turkey Trot, how wonderful it was to be back with everyone on Thanksgiving morning. Turkey Trot, Turkey Trot twenty twenty just felt super weird, like actually getting to have breakfast with my family that day. I really would rather be out at Crystal Lake Park uh, with anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand people. Uh, just enjoying the camaraderie and it just, nothing makes you feel more thankful. So I was really happy that we were able to bring together about thirteen hundred people on Thanksgiving morning and uh, do Turkey Trot as we traditionally do. Uh, also I listed on here during our recap, we brought back a full fitness schedule and while that may not seem like something to really brag about, um, we haven't run a full, full fitness schedule since everything shut down in March of twenty twenty. And so when I say full fitness schedule, that means um, the outdoor pool was open and we were running at the peak when the outdoor pool is open upwards of fifty-one classes a week. And I would like to mention, we were doing that with nine less fitness staff than what we were doing in March of twenty twenty. Uh, that doesn't seem like the loss of that many staff when you compare to like a big staff pool like the pool. Uh, but we really only operate normally with um, a staff of about twenty-five to thirty fitness instructors. So losing nine of them since twenty twenty and still being able to put out a full fitness schedule um, was quite the feat to do during twenty twenty-one. Uh, and then lastly, we were able to uh, reestablish um, some really good wellness collaboration connections. So we were able to connect with Athletico. And we've been offering monthly free injury screenings at the Phillips Recreation Center. We've been doing that since September. Uh, we also made a really good new connection for financial wellness workshops with the local branch of Edward Jones and have been offering at least one wellness collaboration for financial wellness per season. So all of those have been super exciting for us in twenty twenty-one. Uh, looking forward to twenty twenty-two. Uh, I think staffing, as Leslie said too, is is going to continue to be a challenge. Um, also trying to kind of find that balance between everything that we are still doing within the outreach and wellness department while prepping for uh, the new facility. That's exciting, but it is going to prove to be a challenge as we grow and expand. Uh, and then lastly, not necessarily a challenge, but more of an opportunity. Um, the outreach and wellness department's really excited to see what comes of um, Dr. Monica Sidolska and Dr. Kim Shenoo's uh, new iteration of the study and where that kind of drives our work moving forward. Are there any questions?
Well, I'd like to end with, um, that was a in my opinion, a really good snapshot of all the hard work that's gone into the year. There's a lot more, as you all know, from our other meetings that we've had throughout the course of the year, but again, I just want to say thanks to uh, this core team and their staff for their creativeness. Um, they've done a spectacular job um, guiding us through this, this pandemic. I mean, this has been going on for two years and they never seem to stop amazing me on the um, their abilities to come up with new ways of reaching people and um, they've just it's just been spectacular. So, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you to all the rec staff for the uh, very informative report. Are there any other questions?
No, I just want to also say thank you. I really appreciate that we're, you know, we start, that we are, we have a PowerPoint presentation to go along with all the stats. It's a really great way to understand what's going on, so we appreciate that.
Anything else there? All righty then, we can move on to item D. Uh, action to approve wage increase for full-time employees.
Thank you, Michael. As you all know, um, all the commissioners know, the leadership team has been uh, very active in um, overseeing and looking at our wage structure for the past couple of years. Um, most recently, as you know, we hired Gov HR to put together a new, our second new wage uh, structure. Um, and we've been using that for about a little less than a year. At the same time, while we believe that's a very good uh, study, we know many things have happened to really change um, and impact that current structure. We've seen the impact of COVID. Um, many uh, private groups in particular are increasing wages rapidly. We're bumping up against minimum wage increases and uh, just the over-competitive market of people, not enough workers and and kind of struggling with that, with people leaving the park district, trying to retain folks that we have and to replace people that have left. So all of that has kind of added to what I would call this perfect storm of a real challenge um, for the park district to maintain our place in the market. So in early January, we contacted Gov HR like many groups um, likely did as well. And we wanted to know and explore what we could do that would immediately help um, stabilize our situation, send the right message to staff um, that we're, you know, really looking at wages as much as we can. Uh, we also met with all of our full-time staff. We had small group discussions to learn more about their situation, how COVID's impacted them, um, their challenges in finding replacement staff or seasonal staff. Um, all of that continues to challenge us. So one of the recommendations that Gov HR had was suggesting immediately to increase all full-time staff, except the executive director um,'s wage by one dollar an hour. And the idea was that it would immediately increase their wage. Um, it brought more of an equity approach, providing lower wage, lower wage um, staff to get a larger percentage of that increase. Um, and also encourage us to look at other things beyond that as we continue to look at this. Um, things that they had also recommended was consider moving from our current fifty percent place in the market to perhaps fifty-five or sixty. Upgrade healthcare insurance for staff or add some component to that. We discussed um, options of more flexed working conditions, um, work from home strategies that might be more We discussed options of more flex working conditions, work from home strategies that might be more family friendly. And also consider looking at more local government units as more of our comparisons, because those are the groups that people often leave the park district and go to other places. So again, tonight we have information. There's a second handout in the brochure or sorry, in the packet that has some of the financial information. I'm sure we can walk through that if, if you all need to or have questions about that. But again, the request on the, before the commissioners tonight is considering that one dollar an hour increase for all full-time staff as our first step and our first measure. Could stop and pause there and see if there's any questions or any other discussion or questions about the salary worksheet that was included on the percentages and increases.
Just to clarify, are, are, are there any changes in this, in these tables from what we saw at the study session?
No changes. No changes at all.
Obviously, you know, someone might wonder why one dollar versus more than a dollar or less than a dollar. Again, I think it was a significant number. It was one that you could apply to every wage. It, it's something you could simply count. And, and that was a starting place. I should add too, staff's hope is that we could address and look at our wage structure in, in the May timeframe like we do each year. So obviously we wanted to make sure that we did have potentially some resource to look at that again in May, in the spring. So that one dollar seemed to be the starting point.
And it does equal about a four percent increase to our wages, which is really a typical May first increase. Except that it's distributed equitably as two thousand eighty dollars to the base salary of each employee rather than a percentage increase. So it's a really nice way to, like Tim said, it gives the lower wage earners a higher percentage increase. So it's a way to really try to bump up those lower wage earners to the market as much as we can.
Lastly, I'd mentioned, you know, this is very atypical. I don't recall in my time that we did anything at this point in the year. Obviously we've done individual adjustments due to, you know, increased duties or accomplishments of, of staff. But this would be sort of a, an attempt to get a better handle, retain the staff that we have and, and try to apply as much resource as we can to the ever-changing wage structure. We don't believe that this will be something that'll pass, you know, in a few months and we'll go back to the good old days. I'm calling it the new economy and it's likely to be with us and potentially, you know, go beyond. But as a way to, to get a handle right now, we think that would be a recommended thing that, that the board could do. And again, it would be retroactive back to January first.
And, and will that apply actually to people who have actually already left the district in that interim period?
Actually, it's anybody. So that they have all, so Karen's still at the district. So she, her last official full-time day was January twenty-eighth, but we kept her on part-time. She's still training with Sandy. So she's still in, on our payroll. So she'll, she will be included. She's the only one I think that's already gone, but everybody else like Lexi's last day is this coming Friday. Sandra Baker's last day is this coming Friday? I don't know. Is it Eric or is it the one after the eighteenth? I think it's the eighteen. So, so there's folks leaving, but I think everybody that's still here is included.
Well, are there any commissioner questions on this? Is anybody willing to make a motion that we approve this recommendation?
I moved to increase the wages of all full-time district employees by one dollar per hour, retroactive to January first, twenty twenty-two.
That's been moved and segmented. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, a roll call vote, then starting with Cedric.
I.
Roger.
I.
Meredith.
I.
Nancy.
I.
And I voted in the affirmative as well. So that passes unanimously with all five commissioners voting. So we will be taking that step and then reviewing this issue in, in more detail as we prepare for the next fiscal year. There was no, there was nothing removed from the consent agenda to deal with under new business. So that brings us to Roman numeral nine, comments from commissioners. Are there any comments?
Yes, Derek, I just wanted to say on behalf of the Champagne County Audubon Board, we really appreciate the seriousness with which you and your staff are taking the issue of bird strikes with respect to health and wellness. I haven't given them the link yet, but I've been keeping them abreast of what, what you've been doing. And Savannah, I was thrilled to see that Anita Purvis Center is also on a parallel line with that, looking at, at, at the bird strike impact packs. Cause I think that, that sets a tone for the Forest Preserve District, Champagne Parks, Savoy Parks. It's a, it's an important issue because we're losing a lot of birds that way. But I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Yeah, thank you, Roger.
Any other commissioner comments? Well, for myself, again, I would just like to say thanks to the staffs for all the hard work that they've been doing and dealing with a very rapidly changing situation. I know it's been hard on, on everybody and it's gratifying as a board member to see how, how well this team pulls together and to try to meet these kinds of challenges. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if, are there any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, then we have completed our agenda for the evening and I will declare us adjourned.